Good evening. I have 7:00 PM on October 10, 2024, here in historic Town Hall at 130 Main Street. We'd like to convene an open meeting of the Select Board -- you are -- of the Select Board and remind everyone that these proceedings are being televised and recorded by Sandwich Community Television. May we start with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, is anyone here for public comment? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a quick comment? Just ask everyone that when you intend to speak that the green mic is on and that your microphone is close to your speaking. Thank you.
Okay, sir, your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
Thank you. I appreciate this opportunity to share information about the environmentally important paint stewardship legislation presently before our legislature. My name is Tom Irwin. I live at 54 Central Ave. in Dalton, Massachusetts. I'm a retired chemical engineer and a physician who, while a member of the Dalton Waste Management Committee, was dealing with the same waste crisis municipalities across the state are dealing with. Often no landfill, hauling our waste out of state and dealing with the ever-increasing costs of disposal. Paint stewardship was discovered while looking for alternatives. The concept seemed perfect, and after visiting Connecticut, Vermont, and New York to confirm the program was well-received by both retailers and consumers, I became an advocate for this legislation in Massachusetts. Why is paint stewardship needed? Massachusetts generates 6 million tons of trash annually, but only has 3.2 million tons of annual trash incineration capacity. The remaining trash needs to be landfilled, but with only five active municipal landfills in Massachusetts and no landfills planned, the majority of the remaining trash needs to be hauled out of state to places as far away as Ohio and South Carolina. A product stewardship approach applied to waste streams such as paint, mattresses, and packaging, which are amenable to this approach, will help us begin decreasing this expensive burden. What is paint stewardship? It is a program that allows residents to discard unwanted liquid latex and oil-based paints, which are listed in your first handout, at participating paint retail stores any day the stores are open, without a disposal cost and without regard for where the paint was purchased. Participating retailers are involved voluntarily, as you'll note in your second handout, which shows Vermont retailers coming and going as suits their business. The retailers collect the returned paint in totes. Full totes are hauled by the paint manufacturers to reprocessing plants, like the plant we have in Hanover, Mass., where the returned paint is reblended to like-new condition and sold to entities like Restore and Habitat for Humanity. The consumer's part is paying an eco fee of 75 cents to a dollar at the time of purchase. This program has been working well in all of our neighboring states, Connecticut, Rhode Island, Maine, Vermont, and New York. The benefits Sandwich will see from paint stewardship are first. It will be a service Sandwich residents will value. The desire to recycle rather than discard has resulted in between 30% and 60% of latex returned to the Enfield, Connecticut Sherwin-Williams store each week, coming from Massachusetts residents. Other retailers just over the Mass border and states with law have had the same experience. Second, it will present no cost to Sandwich or other municipalities and will save household hazardous waste day costs. Third, it will also significantly decrease a toxic waste that occurs more often than we would like when oil-based paints are discarded inappropriately. And fourth, and finally, it will be a model for future product stewardship legislation that will address additional larger items, such as mattresses, solar panels, rechargeable batteries, and packaging. The draft resolution being suggested, which is your third handout, is consistent with the state's plans. There is no arm twisting. The MMA is a supporter, as noted in their testimony to the Environment and Natural Resources Committee, which is your fourth handout. The Mass DEP in their 2030 Solid Waste Master Plan, your fifth handout, calls out product DPR in general and paint DPR in particular as key contributors to moving the state to their goal of zero waste by 2050. Also of note, 95 municipalities across the state, which are listed in your sixth handout, have passed resolutions or endorsements. Next steps. With the unusually strong support of 29 representatives and 12 senators sponsoring, go sponsoring, paint stewardship, this legislation was viewed favorably by the Environment and Natural Resources Committee and sent to the House Ways and Means Committee. This was a very important step. However, legislators have commented that it is critical to demonstrate that addressing solid waste is a municipal priority, which resolutions will do, to compel the Ways and Means Committee to seriously consider and favorably view and send paint stewardship to the floor of the legislature for a vote. Hence, I respectfully request the Sandwich Select Board put paint stewardship on an upcoming agenda to make possible, including their valued endorsement of paint stewardship through passing a supportive resolution. I thank you for your attention and for your consideration of this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Irwin. Anyone else for public comment? Review and approval of minutes of September 26, 2024.
Make a motion. We approve the minutes of 9:26:24.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockner. All in favor?
Abstention.
I wasn't here.
Okay, so we have three yeses and two abstentions. Thank you. Town manager report.
All of my reports will be contained in the upcoming agenda items.
Thank you. Correspondents' statements and announcements. Okay, just quickly, please, because School Akbeti Bet met last night. It was a very impressive session. Due to the fact that the Sandwich Middle High School and the Kuri Allen Upper Secondary School in Finland had a student exchange complete of the first full session. The effort had been sponsored by the U.S. Embassy in Finland. The student projects focused on topics such as renewable energy, K-12 education, gender equality, and food security. Finnish students also got to spend some time in Boston, Martha's Vineyard, Provincetown, the Cape Cod National Seashore, a Friday night sandwich football game, and Porch Fest, Sandwich Fest, all enjoyed. Thanks to Assistant Superintendent Dr. David Quinn for organizing this experience, as well as Sandwich Middle High School science teachers Rene Fudella, Melissa Kestenbaum, and Dr. Erin Melly-Taylor for their outstanding work. During the April 2025 vacation, a Sandwich group will travel to Finland for similar experiences with those peers. In other items, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges completed the accreditation visit at Sandwich Middle High School. The Sandwich school population is now at 2,149. The Sandwich Middle High School Advanced Placement Status remained silver. The Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment System results for Sandwich remain solid. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Miller?
I just would like to pass on a congratulation to the Chamber of Commerce for Sandwich Fest. Our Rotary Club has been involved since the beginning, for six years. I have never seen a crowd like that. It was absolutely perfect day also. And I hope they made the money that I imagine they did from seeing the way it was handled. Just heads up to them.
The blending of the two events was just outstanding, quite an idea. And I think the Rotary is a little bit responsible for that as well. Thank you.
If the public doesn't know, they used all of Water Street and School Street. I think there were over 100 vendors. So that's quite a showing.
Yes, the vendors began to arrive slightly before 8:00, and gosh, the parking lot got full in a hurry. It was a fine effort by all. Anybody else? Okay. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 138, the Sandwich Select Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October 10, 2024, at 7:05 PM in the Sandwich Town Hall Auditorium, located at 130 Main Street, Sandwich, Massachusetts, to consider the application for an alteration of premises of an annual off-premise all-alcohol liquor license for Meeting House Road, Inc., do business as Meeting House Package and Variety, located at 263 Gatootit Road, Sandwich, Massachusetts, 02563. Dennis R. Connery as manager. Anyone wishing to be heard on the subject will be offered an opportunity at that time.
Make a motion when we open the hearing.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, 5-0. Please be certain that the green light is still on, and please speak into the mic.
Okay, this alteration of premises application seeks to clarify the current floor plan of the building. The square footage of the building has changed over time. All of these changes have been approved and permitted through the Building Department. Looking to sublease 886 square feet of food service area of the building for prepared food sales only. No new floor space is being added. I have the list of abutters or the abutters notifications here.
And sir, if you stated your name in relation to this application at the outset, I'm sorry I missed it.
I'm sorry, I didn't. Dennis R. Connery, the manager, owner of the store.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So you're filing a change of the use of the liquor license? Is that what we're doing?
Well, it's a change in the square footage.
So the food will be separate from the liquor?
Yes.
All right, so you're not adding liquor to the food?
No.
It's separate?
Yes.
So that's what the amendment is to this application?
Yeah, it's the way it is now and the way it's been for the last 10 years. It just needs to be clarified on the license.
This is more of a housekeeping cleaning?
And it's 886, 886 feet, right? Is the--
886 square feet is the food service area.
Okay, thank you. Any changes in the structure?
No, no changes. The new tenant may add like a pizza oven, but that just replaced the one we have.
Is it the same location that it is now?
Yes, exactly the same.
Okay, so the Building Department is okay with this so far? And the Fire Department has done their inspections?
I have not seen the references, but Ms. Carroll would not submit it to you without those in good standing.
Received. Anybody in the public have any comments? Seeing none.
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion to close by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I make a motion. We approve the annual off-premises all-alcohol liquor license alterations of premises, Meeting House Road Incorporated, DBA Meeting House Package Variety, 263 Gatootit Road. Dennis R. Connery, manager.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Best wishes for success.
All right, thank you. Thanks, appreciate your time.
Next on our agenda is Ms. Maggie Downey, Chief Administrative Officer, Cape Light Compact with a three-year plan that you want to present, I presume, right?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. As you said, my name is Maggie Downey, and I have a presentation for you this evening. It's usually come every year, but things kind of got disrupted, and we did, I think, one meeting via Zoom. So it's nice to see everybody in person. Are you advancing, Heather? I'll just say, next slide. So I wanted to begin by just reframing who the Cape Light Compact is. I know you all know. But just for the audience and to thank you for allowing Leanne Drake, who is your board representative. She is an active and engaged representative on your behalf. So thank you. She adds quite a lot to the discussion. So who is the Cape Light Compact? The Cape Light Compact was formed in 19-- I'm dating myself-- 1997 with a vote of town meeting. It is a joint powers entity made up of the 15 towns on the Cape and the six towns on the vineyard. And the compact was formed as a joint powers entity, reorganized under the 2016 Municipal Modernization Act, which separate gave-- increased the checks and balances so that treasury functions are actually not within the Cape Light Compact. They're outside to maintain more accountability and transparency. So we reorganized as a joint powers entity, all 21 towns. We are still providing three primary functions: power supply, which is our responsibility is negotiating the terms and conditions of the power supply contract; energy efficiency, which is about 99% of how we spend our time and our budget and our staff are allocated to energy efficiency; and consumer advocacy, which is basically participating in the Department of Public Utilities regulatory dockets and making sure that the Cape and Vineyard have a voice on what's happening in Boston. Next slide. So here are-- just wanted to give you a snapshot. We operate on a calendar year, so not a fiscal, municipal fiscal year. So we always are on calendar year. And here are the results for Sandwich for calendar year 2023. We had a total of 1,500, a little over 1,500 participants and receiving incentives and direct rebates about $2.7 million. And they're broken out by the sectors that we're required to report on, which are low-income customers, residential customers, and commercial and industrial customers. So that's your snapshot for 2023. And if you want to go to the next-- I'm working my way into the three-year plan. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things for 2024. We budget in three-year increments. So '22 to '24 is the existing energy efficiency plan. And I'm here to give you a couple of highlights on the next plan, which we will be filing on October 31, which will cover the period of 2025 to 2027. So in 2024, we continue to offer no-cost energy assessments for residents and businesses. We offer 100% coverage for income-eligible and moderate-income customers and renters. So moderate-income customers can now self-attest. That's a change for weatherization. Weatherization is air sealing and/or insulation. And for market-rate customers, those that are not between-- less than 80% of the state median income, we will cover 75% of the cost of any insulation or air sealing jobs. We also have very generous heat pump rebates. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts has very aggressive electrification goals. So we have a whole-home rebate of $10,000 and a partial-home rebate, which is based on per ton. So $1,250 per ton. It can average between $3,500 and $5,500 for a partial-home installation of a heat pump. You can see in the photo, or it could be a mini-split or it can be a ducted system depending upon the customer's home. Next slide. Some of the other exciting things that we offered in 2024. We received a grant from Mass Clean Energy Center. And love them or hate them, we ran an e-bike program for low- and moderate-income customers. That program, we ran it for almost three years with a grant from the state, and it's now fully just subscribed, so it has ended. But I did want to touch upon that. We issued a total of 225 vouchers to eligible customers. We also continue to offer a series of energy rebates for Energy Star appliances, room air conditioners, dehumidifiers, electric clothes dryers. We also-- which is also a program that's ending-- introduced-- we did a pilot for 100 deed-restricted homes called the Cape and Vineyard Electrification Offering, CVO, where we focused on, again, deed-restricted properties. And we wanted to make sure that those that were living in unlimited budgets and income-eligible housing were not left behind in the move to electrify. So the customers that met the income threshold had a deed restriction, or habitat home, or a Sandwich public housing or another town housing, received a new heating system, a total, either ducted or non-ducted heat pump. And then we paired that with solar PV to make sure that even though they were electrifying, they were also generating behind the meter to reduce their overall energy burden. Our focus was on oil, propane, and electric resistance homes, because that's where you save and reduce your overall energy costs when you're shifting in those three technologies. We did not offer this to natural gas heated homes because the customer would have been upside down. Moving to electrifying that home would have put them in a higher-cost category. So it was just on those, what we call, delivered fuels. We also provided full weatherization, and 25 of the homes received batteries for resiliency purposes as well. So that, those are the highlights of some exciting stuff in calendar year 2024. If you want to go to the next slide. We also rolled out this year, we applied to the state to be the concierge service provider. So I'm sharing this with you and excited that we'll get this out on your people watching it at home. And then if they decide to watch Selectment Meeting again, they'll find out about the Energy Saver Home Loan Program. So these are funds that came from the federal government to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, to the climate-- the Massachusetts Community Climate Bank. You can see that on the right of this, on the screen. And it is targeted to low- and moderate-income customers, residential homeowners, who, up to 135% of area median income, to make a series of energy efficiency and renewable improvements. If you want to go to the next slide, I can show you. So eligibility, as I said, you have to be 135% of area median income. So for us on the Cape, that would be earning up to $166,645. What's different about this program is it's-- the income is based on who is on the deed. So if Maggie Downey owned a home in Sandwich, that would be-- I would be earning less than $166,000. I would be eligible. Whereas if it was Patrick and Mike and several others, with different people, it's combined. So it's the names on the deed that determine eligibility for this program. Must be a single-family home, and we must have guaranteed energy savings at least 20%, which means significant insulation or electrification paired with solar PV. So this is a long-term-- if you want to go to the next slide. It is a loan. It is a second mortgage. The loan amounts range from $10,000 up to $100,000. It's a 240-month loan. The first 18 months are interest-only, and then they're amortized over the remaining 222 months. So the interest rates for those that are below 80% of AMI is a half a percent. And for those between 80-- I should say 81, 81, and 135%, it's a 2% interest rate. So this offers for those living in the town of Sandwich whose homes are in need of repair in order to make them more comfortable and to-- which will then reduce their overall operating cost of that home. This is a great, a great program. It acts as a mortgage, so the home is collateral, which is why you have to own the home. But again, these are-- and we have-- you can see on the slides the banks that have been approved here locally as Cape Cod Five. There's also a Bay Coast Savings. And this shows you all of the things that are eligible for the loan program and why the Cape Light Compact and the board approved and authorized us to pursue this, because many of the things that are on this list are not eligible for funding with energy efficiency funds. So being able to take energy efficiency programs and any incentives there and then marry it with this very low-interest loan program is a very good opportunity for a homeowner who wants to make improvements to their house. So those are all the list-- do you have questions?
Yeah. For that loan to be applied to your house, do you have to have equity in the house?
No, you do. You do not have to have equity in the house. You do have to go through the loan program. Our role is to help, is to facilitate that. We don't do the assessment or the lending, but we're to help you fill out the loan application. But you don't have to have equity, a certain amount of equity in there. You do have to have a credit score. Remember what it is off the top of my head. But you do have to be able to go through the Climate Bank's financing criteria. So just on that slide, as we're getting into the next one, some of the things, just to talk about how do you marry it up? You might be an income-eligible, moderate or low income, and you want to put in a whole-house heat pump because you have oil or propane. So through the Compacts program, you would get-- that would be at no cost to you. We would cover it 100%. And now you want to pair that with solar, but you need a new roof or you need to have certain trees removed. That's where the Energy Saver Home Loan Program comes in and gives a great opportunity for those income-eligible customers to make some significant improvements in their property. So I'm also really happy to announce it's taken us over four years to get here, but we now have signed all of our documents and will be announcing a USDA Rural-- U.S. Department of Agriculture, this USDA Rural Energy Savings Program, of Agriculture, this USDA Rural Energy Savings Program, which is a solar loan program as well for anyone who is not lower moderate income. This will be a, we went out to bid and hired Cape Cod Five to service the loan. So we are getting a zero-interest loan. Cape Light Compact is getting a zero-interest loan from the federal government. And then it is relending it to eligible customers who will, to specifically install solar on their homes and then repay the loan within 10 years. And the interest rate that we've negotiated is below 3%. So stars kind of aligned and we have a lot of programs for income-eligible and for market-rate customers that decide they want to pursue in maximizing electrification, the Compacts programs, and then installing solar. Next slide. So the Commonwealth of Massachusetts passed the 2022 Climate Act. And in the Climate Act, they moved and shifted the goals for the Cape Light Compact and the other utility administrators throughout the Commonwealth. We used to be a energy efficiency program, so we were all about saving kilowatt hours from lighting, from controls, refrigeration. We are now, have been charged by Mass General Law to also have, it is now energy efficiency and decarbonization, which means we have to reduce greenhouse gases in order to help the state reach its Global Warming Solutions Act goal. So our mission was changed by legislation and expanded what we can do and what we can offer. And as a result of the Climate Act, electrification, heat pumps, focus on oil, propane, electric resistance homes are where these, in continuing always to look at the building envelope, will be the focus of the next 25 to 27 three-year plan. Next slide. The plan, the upcoming plan, as I said, will be filed October 31st and it has three primary goals. Decarbonization, there is a significant focus on equity. There is a statewide, a $1.9 billion investment in equity as well as enhanced customer experience. We had significant statewide, they experienced significant, I guess, a debacle with processing incentives and rebates due to a vendor not performing. So that is the third goal of increasing customer experience and performance of our vendors. Next slide. We also have small business enhancements supporting decarbonization. So we didn't, we're just rolling out the ability to offer for small businesses, installing heat pumps as well as weatherizing and insulating our buildings. These are going to be focusing on renters. A lot of our small businesses might not own the building, so they pay the electric bill, but, so there's a disincentive for making the improvements. So we are now, we'll be rolling out programs targeting our small businesses regardless of whether they own or rent that space. So the incentives will be there at no cost or up to 100% to help the landlord and encourage the landlord to move forward with the improvements. We're also continuing to prioritize our community-based organization, so Main Streets. We have a 100% incentive for charitable nonprofits, focus on, the Cape has plenty of faith-based organizations as well as other nonprofits. There are requirements, size of budget, et cetera, but we were focusing on making sure, identifying that they weren't participating in the programs because they didn't have any of the co-pays to, to move forward with these. So again, we'll also be partnering, continue to partnering with National Grid to make sure it doesn't matter, is it the Cape Light Compact? How do you heat your business? How do you heat your home? So that you can receive consistent and high-quality service. Next slide. I just wanted to focus a little bit on the, I talked about equity. So the state, these are statewide residential and low-income offers. They are three, based on three things, what we call weatherization, again, air sealing and insulation, barrier mitigation. And that means you could have mold or vermiculite or your electric panel is knob and tube. So it's a barrier to preventing you from moving forward with insulating your attic because it's, there might be mold up there or there's old vermiculite, asbestos. So these programs will now have dollars available and incentives. If you're in low and moderate income, you can see for barrier mitigation, we'll cover 100% of it in order to advance and allow you to move forward with other energy efficiency and decarbonization measures. You can see it looks like a little, can't remember what we used to call it, a clipboard, a clipboard there, but it actually denotes that you have to income verify. So customers will have to provide documentation that they are, that they're income screening. We do that in-house at the Cape Light Compact, very private, confidential, but also easy. You can walk in, email, or call to start this process. So you can see that per the state and the direction we've been given by the Commonwealth, there is a significant focus on low and moderate income and renters, customers who rent. And the reason is because over the last 12 to 15 years that we've been delivering these programs, they have not participated. They have been paying in to the programs, but they're what we call hard-to-reach, hard-to-serve. They have not participated at the same level as market-rate customers. Market-rate customers still have incentives for weatherization, barrier mitigation, electrification. They are just not as generous or as rich as low and moderate income customers. Next slide. So our goal at the Cape Light Compact, again, running the energy efficiency plan, being, receiving the grant to administer the Energy Saver Home Loan Program, offering the RUS, is to really provide comprehensive soup-to-nuts customer service. So that if a customer comes in and says, I want to do, I want to put solar on my roof, what do I do? Or I'm not happy with my oil heat, what are my options? What's the best? Should I do a heat loan? Should I take this loan? What's going to work? What is in my best interest? We're here to help to facilitate any interested customers so that they have the information on which they can make the decisions that are the most affordable and give them the outcome that they're looking for. So that's our, that is the main core focus of the next three-year plan. The next couple of slides, I'll skip through really fast on workforce development. This is not Cape Light Compact. We are required to give Mass CEC some of our energy efficiency funds. They will be collecting statewide from all of us, $24 million to develop our workforce. We, as you know, are, if you look around in all of our utility industries, we're an aging workforce and we need, we need our tech schools and we need to engage in interest the next generation in applying for all utility jobs, whether you're an insulation contractor, a plumber, an HVAC contractor, or a lineman. So a lot of focus will be in Massachusetts on developing workforce development. Next slide. This is just information, there is tons of data. Cape Light Compact puts our data up on MassSave, MassSave.com, Data.com. It just put this up here, so you have it in your packet in case anyone is interested in learning about, more about how much money is spent, how much savings, energy savings we've done and incentives. Next slide. We also have lots of marketing. Hopefully you've seen it out there. We have digital displays, paid Google research, where we do radio ads and pays, again, all utilizing, we participate statewide. You can see MassSave. MassSave is a brand that all of the utilities and the Cape Light Compact created so that if you live, you live in Turo or you live out in Williamstown, MassSave is the theme that knits everybody so that that's the program. But it is simply a marketing brand. Each of the PAs, Cape Light Compact, EverSource, National Grid, you know, has its own budget and files its own portion of the energy statewide plan. The next slide. Here, I put these in here because my, one of the 10th first-hand I went to, which was Yarmouth, asked us to include a little bit of a slide just for the audience on power supply rates. This is what I said, started with earlier. We negotiate the terms and condition of the contract. So I wanted to show you where our rates are compared to basic service of the utility because that's usually what I get asked for, how are you doing to the distribution company? So you can see the rates there. And then the next slide, Heather. This is a, I went back, this is a, we've been doing this now since 2002. So from 2002 right up through 2024, you can see the comparison between the Cape Light Compacts rates and the utility's basic service rates. You know, when we started this back in 1997 and 198, everybody thought, oh, we're going to be saving five cents on your electric bill if you have a competitive supplier. And as you can see, from very close, from the graph, it is, it is not in pennies. We're talking, the savings and the differences are usually tenths of a cent. It can be, like this time, it's two cents, but they're usually much closer than that. The times, as you can see, the compact is in green, where we've been significantly above basic service, were two hurricanes, where we were at doing, in the market, right after the first hurricane in 2007, I think that is. And when we had purchased, we were significantly above the utility. But other than that, we've been, we run fairly closely between the two prices. Customers have a choice in who they select for their supplier. The compact is the default supplier, but it's not the only supplier. There's lots of information on our website on how to choose a supplier and also the, it's also on the Department of Public Utilities. And I think that's my last slide. Oops. Oh, no, it was the other part of the conversation. What is driving higher prices? You know, if you'd go, if you looked at that other slide, you can see that even though we might be lower, everything is higher. So we broke this slide down onto the left, which is the supply side. That's the piece that we negotiate the contract over, what's happening and why prices are high. And then on the delivery side, which is the other section of the bill. So on the supply side, what is driving prices, increased prices over the, from seven years ago are two, primary two things. Public policy, state law, which is requiring an increasing amount of renewables to be included. There's a renewable portfolio standard, there's a clean energy standard, a clean peak standard. All of these things are included and built in, not just the price of energy in pricing. And then the second piece, so it's been driving, are natural gas prices. Natural gas prices are high. The majority of our electricity is produced right now with combined-cycle natural gas plants. Combined-cycle natural gas plants are experiencing increased prices for three reasons. Pipeline capacity, we are at the end of the pipeline, citing new, bringing in new pipes in a very densely New England area. Difficult, if not impossible, to do in a timely manner. We also have increasing demand, the war in Ukraine. We rely very heavily on LNG, liquid natural gas, in the winter. And we are paying, because of the war in Ukraine and the lack of gas coming from the Soviet, from Russia, our LNG is going abroad or we have to pay prices competitive with Europe to keep our LNG here, to keep our plants running. So that's what's happening on the supply side. And in the delivery, you're seeing distribution, transmission, and then again, public policy. We have the smart tariff, we just had a rate case, our aging infrastructure, transmission, distribution, lots of changes that we pay for as rate pairs. And that was my last slide, I promise. So any questions? I know I went through an awful lot. I'm always happy if, if anyone has any, I put that you can always call. Our offices are right here in the Cape in Yarmouth. Customers can drop in or call and say, I don't know what you were talking about the other night. Can you explain that to me?
So one of the questions I have is, when I look at the income-based model with this, is that, is, are the programs available because it's subsidized by the state and that's why it's income-based? Because, you know, I'm just speaking for, like, I looked at the number like 169,000, you know, roughly. You know, this day and age, if you have two people, like a, the husband's a firefighter or a police officer and a teacher, you know, chances are that pushes them beyond $169,000. And that, you know, I think that if you, you know, I guess my question is, is if it's not income-driven, you might have a higher response rate for people doing it because I think a lot of people that are just normal, everyday people are cut off on that even, you know, like I look at, you know, as I was sitting here, I was trying to look up the average salary of a firefighter on Cape Cod. And then if you, if their husband or wife or whichever, you know, verse, you know, public service employee, if that, if they had two people working, which really on Cape Cod, you have to have two people working in a household, you get priced out of these programs. So I just didn't know if they, if that income level was selected because there's a, you know, federal or state kickback that offsets that or if it's, and I think the participation would be higher if it was, you know, the bar was set higher.
So there are two programs. So the, the dollar amount that you mentioned for the Energy Saver Home Loan Program was set federally because those are federal dollars. So it, they, they've determined the percentage based on the area median income, so it's an average. So that, that dollar amount is set and dictated to us by the federal government because those are federal funds. So that's, that's the one. But on the, on the Compacts, on the energy efficiency programs for low and moderate income, the threshold and those incomes are also set from the Department of Public Utilities from a regulatory perspective. So one of the things that we originally talked about is should moderate income, because low income is statewide for any of the state programs, whether it's Medicaid or WIC programs, it's six, if you're 60% or below of the state median income, that is the definition for Liheat. But again, at all of the state programs, again, a lot of these are federally set, those threshold. We then created, because there was a gap, moderate income, 61 to 80. And we had, and we proposed it and the DPU approved it in this plan. We had many discussions and public hearings throughout the last year over, should that be, instead of being 61 to 80, should it be 61 to 120? Again, increasing that pool. And it was not, like the, the action, when we looked at the numbers, there was not enough support to expand and increase the overall threshold. Do I think that we are leaving people behind because, again, especially living on the Cape or the Vineyard, we're working paycheck to paycheck and we're not in 61 to 80% of state or area median income?
Right. Because the other thing is if you look at the cost of real estate on the Cape. You know, like I, you know, I have my broker's license, so I go on it quite frequently. And, you know, the amount, I think the other day when I searched like houses under 500,000, there was 21 houses on Cape Cod under half a million dollars. So in order to afford that, you know, that 160, you have to make, you know, to qualify for a mortgage to buy a house is $600,000, you know, in current rates, you know, you're, like, we sold a house, you know, in August, I was involved with it. You know, somebody that had a $650,000, $685,000 purchase, 7%, whatever, by the time they're done, they're, you know, 4,600, you know, 4,600 a month. You know, that's, you know, and the house needed work. So, you know, they need the benefit of all these programs, but they don't qualify because they make too much money to support the purchase of the house, which is really, you know, it's a good program, but we're priced out.
There's, for the federal programs, the Energy Saver Loan Program, that's something we would have to address at the federal level. But I think, and I can bring it up with the board during, there will be public comment, public hearings on, on the plan. And I, I think it's important for the Department of Public Utilities because we, remember the Cape Light Compact is a fully regulated entity. Our budgets are approved, the programs are approved, they're, they're regulated. For the regulators to hear that the income thresholds are, we're missing out of our, our working residential customers on the Cape are falling behind and falling through the cracks because we're not poor enough and we're not well-off enough to do it without the assistance and we're not, our incomes aren't low enough in order to get the incentives that are there. So I would really appreciate that. I'll circum, I can circle back with Heather when the hearing's there. It would be great to have a letter. We can, we can work on drafting something just to raise it. Do I think it's going to change this plan? No, because there is a population in that income that hasn't been statewide, but I think you have to be thinking ahead because, okay, so we're going to serve this population. And then in the next three-year plan, we need to seriously look at the incomes, not so much as a cookie cutter, but what's unique to the Cape and Vineyard and what incomes fit and serve our customer base as opposed to just doing something statewide that isn't working for us locally.
I think, I think the way to verify whether Shane's correct is to take Cape Cod and see how many people qualify for your programs. I mean, you must keep track. And if in fact, you've got a low percentage numbers, then obviously you're right. We're priced out on the Cape. Now statewide, of course, it's different. And I guess maybe we're unique in the sense of the costs that we're running into here. All of the states are it too, so. So if you could get that figure for us, and I said, some of these programs I think are fairly new, you said, right? So they may not have a track record yet, but.
We'll follow up with our, the data on our low and moderate income customer base. I have it, I just don't know it off the top of my head.
The only thing I would add to that too is, because you partnered with Cape Cod Five and, you know, I'm certain that they track the average income of the applicants that are coming in. You know, so if you're getting those things, yeah, I bet they could say, it'd be interesting to hear from them, like what the average income of the last 100 mortgages they put out was. I bet it'd be surprising, you know.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Maggie, I just wanted to thank you for your longevity in carrying out your task as administrator for this. It's a phenomenal career you've had.
I used to, I had my original hair color when we first went past it. This was a long time ago.
I mean, I, I realize that, you know, I was there in that '97 formation. That was my first year on this board. But it really helps when you have someone who can look, visionary, to look at and be somewhere, know you're going to be here, plan for it. It's, it's very effective for government to have that kind of longevity. On behalf of the board, I know that we appreciate the efforts.
Thank you.
That have been made even just for this very building, two times around for RAC. So so many people you've helped over the years, very proud of that. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you, thank you. It's an honor to, it's an honor to serve. And again, when customers or your residents are like, oh, I heard that presentation, I don't think I'm eligible, have them call us just to, you know, just to verify, just to confirm, is there anything that, that's there? The answer might be, no, you're right, but we can direct you this way. We do still have a zero-interest heat loan for, and it's not income-qualified or limited. So we do have some good products out there to help people.
Mr. Chairman?
Just a couple of comments. One, I think Mr. Hockter's comment is an excellent one. It's a policy issue that we deal with across the Cape on every sort of issue that we have, whether it's providing housing or providing services. But I want to leave, you know, the public with the idea that some of the programs really are very beneficial to all residents of the town, particularly those energy audits, which do lead to a heavy subsidy on some of the improvements. I've personally used them many, many years ago, but my home has better insulation and better systems as a result of that. And so I know that I've saved money over many years, probably time for another one. But I would just encourage the community to call and participate because you just don't know what you might be eligible for. And I also just wanted to piggyback on Patrick's comments, which, you know, we work with the Compacts very routinely. We work with Margaret, with Laura, with Kevin, both on the consumer end, on the policy end, on planning for our own energy efficiency. And I just want to thank you for your team and your leadership and longevity, as Patrick mentioned. It's a pleasure working with you and we look forward to a lot more.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. Do we need to endorse the continuation of the relationship?
No, we're a member of the Cape Light Compact, the town's a participant. This is just a briefing on their plan.
Great.
So you certainly could express your support for it, but it's not necessary.
I think we do.
No, it's a great, I mean, I'm a general contractor and you see some of the things that people get, it's like, you know, it's amazing. It's a good, I mean, it's a good thing.
And it's a great point about the audit too. It doesn't hurt to take advantage of it, it's free. Okay, thank you. Old Business Special Town Meeting and Draft List of Articles for November 18th, 2024.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
We should all have a copy of draft articles from October 8th that Bud has prepared. I know he's talked with you every week about what the possible articles are. Looks like we've been able to reduce that a little bit. So you see on here, we've got the. we've been able to reduce that a little bit. Um, so you see on here, we've got the School Department Operating Budget Appropriation, which is the additional revenue that came in. We talked about appropriating to the schools for a specific facilities purpose. Again, rescinding debt for the Henry T. Wing School that was not necessary. Did I miss one? Nope. And then we've got a, the need, the possible need for an amendment of an easement KP is reviewing. I don't think that we do need that, but we're taking a good look at that. Appropriations from the Promotions Fund, a CPA recommendation, which the CPA Committee in fact recommended this week for additional funds for cemetery restorations. It's not a new project. It just needs to be properly funded. School Department HVAC project, we're still not sure whether that is going to be needed, but the project is out to bid with the bid opening later this month. And if we find that there is a shortfall necessary based on availability of funds, we'd like to be able to be in a position to help them get that done if we can. The big items and really the purpose of the meeting are to increase the Water Infrastructure Investment Fund surcharge. And we're beginning to work on the, the presentation around that, but really is driven by the cost of goods and services relative to the implementation of wastewater and being the best resource to limit the impact on, on the community. And lastly is a sewer betterment assessment provision that allows for extended timeframe on sewer betterments and allows it to run with a property and not to be closed out at a transaction. So that's it for now. No need for any votes by the board, but just keeping you apprised on where we are. And if there's any questions, you know, you can always ask now or later, anytime. But that will be coming up in the next few weeks for a formal vote of the Select Board.
Great. Thank you. Anybody? U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, Section 111, project update.
This is a, Mr. Chairman, this is a great, really thrilling update for everyone. And I think you all know, we did a little news alert earlier in the week, that the Army Corps of Engineers has announced the formal commencement of the project, the contracting with Great Lakes Dredge and Dock, which is a large international company with a tremendously positive reputation. They work extremely efficiently and effectively. We had our first site meeting with both the Army Corps, Great Lakes, Dredge and Dock, and the full staff team, public safety, engineering, public works, beaches, DNR, last week, and got a briefing on the project, which was really incredible. There's some tremendous information in your packet, which is a fact sheet that was prepared by the Army Corps of Engineers. I'll give you a few of the highlights. And they are that the vessel Illinois, or cutter Illinois, will be anchored at the Scusset Barrow site. That will happen hopefully towards the latter part of this month, maybe the third week in October. We may see it come in sooner than that. That will be anchored out there for the duration of the project. It will host 10 to 15 staff members 24 hours a day. On that, all of the employees will be mobilizing out of Elmoth Inner Harbor, Sandwich Inner Harbor. So they'll be coming out of the marina on a daily basis for all shifts. And the Great Lakes has begun mobilization, as you may have seen, at First Beach. So that parking lot has been assigned to Great Lakes for the duration of the project, which is hoped to be completed by Thanksgiving. So really ambitious project schedule. Mobilization will be a couple of weeks. There'll be very large trucks coming into that lot. This is where the large-scale piping will come in to be connected out to that cutter at Scusset. And so that will be for a couple of weeks, fairly routine deliveries and assembly of that. So they can use the methods that they do to get it out and under the canal and connected to the cutter.
It's a-
Yes, whatever magic they have. So that will be happening over the next two weeks. The lot is currently, I took a drive down tonight, it is open. About less than a third is fully enclosed with equipment behind it, but the remaining two-thirds, even more of the lot is open. For the next couple of weeks, it will be closed significantly to allow for that logistics and mobilization that I just described. But after that, the lot will be open and only closed when they have deliveries, which will be intermittent and our understanding is infrequent. But I just wanted to affirm that, you know, the town fully supports GLDD using that lot. It is the most appropriate location for the project, which will pump over 320,000 cubic yards of sand from Scusset onto the north-facing beaches of Sandwich that have been starved for many decades and is a result of work of this board and many of those that preceded you, and especially, you know, our town manager who's been working on this for many, many years. So it's a huge project. It's a big win for the town. Big takeaways for the community are that the work will be 24/7. So those loaders and machine operators will be on the beach. They'll be working in 1,000-foot sections, doing the beach nourishment, the berman dude building, and then moving on to the next section. So you won't be stuck with noise in front of your property for the entire project. But while they're neighboring your property or in your neighborhood, you will hear the beeping of reverse lights, reverse sirens, and you'll also hear, see the lights from the, the equipment. It's an absolute necessity. GLDD has very ambitious goals to have the work done within a two-week horizon. We, of course, will give them the liberty to, to do what they need to do to get the work done efficiently, effectively, and most importantly, safely. So we're thrilled to have them. I'm sure there'll be some minor issues we need to address and adjust along the way, but we really couldn't be more pleased with having a really responsible team with the Army Corps of Engineers, along with Great Lakes, Dredge and Dock, who have proven themselves, both here and other places, to be extremely effective in what they do and, and supportive of, of doing what they can to address community needs, but knowing that the greatest need is getting the project done.
Right. That First Beach lot where they have their equipment today, this is Great Lakes, that's all town property, right?
Yes. Yes.
And as they move on east, that commitment will move on to Town Neck Beach, right? Town Neck Parking Lot, right?
There may be some material and, and equipment stored on Town Neck, but a very small portion. Also on the Boardwalk lot, they may use that as well. So there'll be impacts throughout the service area, but they should be intermittent and not, not long-term. But again, the project itself is very short-term. We expect them to be demobilized by Thanksgiving. So it's not just the work itself. They expect to be off-site and to their next job very quickly.
I see dune elevation here of between the 26 and 21 feet. That's a, that's an investment.
Mm-hmm.
It really is. A minor investment and inconvenience is owing to pay off tremendously.
So they bid 8.95. We were concerned about 12. We got it to 15. Can they keep going? They're paying for it, right?
But you know, the way it's expressed in the government documents is a fixed-fee contract, but I, I don't know how, how that will work. But there certainly is room between the appropriated funds for the contract and the total value in the 111 certification. So that's really great news for us.
And one other question, because we've, the parking for Treehouse has always been an issue.
Yes.
Have you, have you spoken to them about what they're going to do? We don't want problems down there.
So that, you know, the big weekend will be this weekend, this, this October Columbus Day, holiday weekend. They do have deliveries through the morning of Friday, meaning Great Lakes Dock and Dredge, but they'll have the lot, what they have, can open of the lot, will be open this weekend. And then for the next two weeks, it will be closed and Treehouse will have to communicate with its patrons about the limitations. All of the Treehouse lots, spots that are along their, their building will be open and accessible as it is now. But they have a meeting with the project manager from Great Lakes on Tuesday. Of course, we have communicated with them. It is a fast-moving project. As soon as we knew something, we shared it with Treehouse. And there will be impacts for them, and they're going to have to, you know, look at using the public parking that's in the marina area and relying on their shuttle to accommodate patrons. But it's for a very short period of time.
And I don't know whether you can answer this other, but we had that meeting down there. The, the sand they're planning to put down is to the right of the, the rock bar that's out there. They're not putting sand on that, are they, right in front of Treehouse?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Oh, they are?
The project commences there. Yes.
Yeah. You can see how it tapers on the red. It's not going to stay there. No, I mean, it's a, I mean, you read the statistics the Corps put out. It's, I mean, it's almost two miles of pipe that's going in, you know, from the Scusset side and over. I've seen some of it in the marina. It's, it's worth the drive down. Take a look. It's-
They're building it.
Yeah, they're building it now. But I mean, you're talking about almost a 9,000-foot project, like Charlie was saying, 26 to 21 feet high. And in some spots, it's, you know, 100 feet, between 50 and 100 feet width on the bottom. I mean, that's, that's a month, and that's, we need it. I mean, that's good.
That's great insulation.
Yes.
Say the least.
Yes.
And I would just add that in addition to Treehouse, who's obviously, will be impacted by the project itself, Dave DeCanto will be sending a communication out to all of the property owners, letting them know what to expect, so they hear from us directly and can communicate. The one thing I, I would add for the public's benefit is that the site work will not be fenced on the beach, but it is a controlled construction zone and that since it will be operating 24 hours a day, there will be field personnel out there. And they've asked a couple of things, that the public maintain 1,000-foot distance from the construction activity, and that they communicate either through the town or through the Army Corps of Engineer, and that the public should not be, communicate directly with Great Lakes Dock and Dredge. They take only direction from the Army Corps of Engineers. They don't take direction from us. But we certainly can communicate any concerns to the Army Corps.
I wouldn't think they'd be concerned. They've been wanting sand for so long in front of those cottages. But it's going to be bright and it's going to be noisy. And let's just leave it that way that, you know, there's a cost in it, to get that sand there. And it's right up against those houses. So it's going to be close, especially with the machines and stuff, so.
Anybody who monitored the weather over the last three weeks in Florida will, you know, be patient with the impacts of some heavy equipment to protect their property.
Yeah.
The town very much included in that.
Heather, just one other question. Are they actually going to close off, like Town Neck, Big Park Lot at all?
They, they haven't provided us with their final logistics plan. I do think there may be some occasions where it will be closed, but it will not be permanently closed. It's only when they have to bring, you know, some, a big piece of equipment in there. When we do have a final logistics plan, we'll, we'll provide that to you. This, all of this is, you know, subject to final approval by the Army Corps.
Yes. That'll be great, but it all sounds like standard operating procedure in terms of safety. You know, that's what all these rules are about, public safety. Okay. Next item, U.S. Bankruptcy Court Hearing Update, Potential Acquisition of Real Property.
So I wish I had more to share with you, but I have a fairly limited report. We did attend a hearing today at the bankruptcy court. It began just after 11:30 this morning and went until about 2:30, at which time the judge continued the hearing to an uncertain date. There'll be time for additional submittal, submittals to the court. And as soon as we have anything more to report, we will do so. I was joined, as you know, by Town Council Vicky Marsh and Town Council Lee Smith, who's a bankruptcy expert. And Vicky, of course, is a very knowledgeable about the land acquisition, as well as Dave Mason, the trustee for the, for the creditors. Attorney Stephen Weiss was there, along with the marketing and real estate representative, John Tulluzi, who was, who was there as well. But as, as the hearing process moves forward, we'll have more to report.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Other matter is not reasonably anticipated, but by the chairman, I have none. Anybody? Okay. New business. Sandwich Middle High School Wastewater Treatment Plant, sole source procurement determination, amphedrome treatment system.
This is another good news item. The work, as you know, for the improvements to the high school wastewater treatment system are out to bid. I believe Sam Jensen, but definitely Wright Pierce attended a pre-bid conference that was held earlier this week. My understanding that it was well-attended. And there was a site visit that followed. What you have in your packet is a memo from Wright Pierce, along with some communications from Sam Jensen. And this really is the result of procurement transparency, to be clear, that the Select Board knows that we'll be specifying proprietary equipment, which is known as an amphedrome system, which I'm not sure exactly what that does, but some of you may. But that was recommended by Wright Pierce. It was thoroughly reviewed by our staff. And we recommend that the board accept and understand that the equipment associated with this project will be proprietary.
Did I see that there's only one company that actually deals with this?
It's a sole source. Yes.
It's a good thing.
It is a good thing.
This is a good thing. And it's good, good that we have this process. Years ago, we didn't have it, or it looked like it. This is actually a beneficial way to do it because it's a filed subbid.
Mm-hmm.
So it leaves the general with the, you know, can shop.
Mm-hmm.
Right. The proprietary aspect is important. Amphedrome? Well, it's a type of system.
Okay.
And the problem with that type of system is the modifications to it were, were more money than fixing this.
Right.
So even though we're married to it, it's still the best. It's, it's a good, it's a good plan. Okay. So we need a motion.
Before we do, one question. Do we have a timeframe as far as when this would be completed?
That's a good question. I don't think it's a very lengthy construction project once it gets going. I'm not certain.
I'm just wondering if they're going to have to dig up parts of the school grounds.
Yes.
Probably.
Right.
Yes. The train that's in the ground is shot. Just putting in another.
I, I think the board just needs to accept the report. I don't, this is really for transparency purposes. There's no vote. It's a notification to you and the public.
Sole source.
We're aware that it's sole source. Yeah. Right. Okay. We are aware and there's no dissatisfaction. There's no concern.
It's either that or the toilets don't flush.
They may flush. It's just-
Community Preservation Act Grant Agreement, Friends or Relatives with Autism and Related Disabilities, Inc.
Confess that I don't know a lot about this one, but it's been reviewed and recommended by the planning staff, Department of Community Development.
I know in the past, we, we dealt with this because this is in Holcomb Rock Road in Dennis.
Mm-hmm.
I could not remember what connected it to us. Does anybody remember, Charlie?
I can get my hands on the paper.
I think we had people participate in it.
The, how can I say it? The, the town is authorized to send patients there.
Oh, okay. Right. That's, yeah, we utilize this, or-
Yes.
Do you need a motion?
No, this one we need a motion on.
Yeah, it's a standard, I mean, I'm talking-
Accept the grant.
It's a standard grant agreement. It was approved by town meeting. The project is just obviously moving through to the completion phase.
Yes.
This is good for the community.
Make a motion to accept the Community Preservation Act Grant Agreement for the Friends or Relatives with Autism and Related Disabilities, Inc.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hockter, second by Mr. Miller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Okay. Other matter is not reasonably anticipated by the chairman. I have none. Anybody else for public- Anybody else for public comment? Okay. Closing remarks?
I'd just like to bring up and thank Heather, really. We put the peace poles in last week. For those that don't know, that we voted to accept one for Sandwich. They're eight-foot aluminum poles inscribed with four languages, just a simple peace message. And it turned into a much-belliger project. Our Rotary Club was sponsoring it. And we ended up putting four poles in, three in Bourne and one in Sandwich. And we, it was through Heather and Ralph that came up with the site for us to put it up at the Cow Building. It's right off the walkway. People couldn't take a look at it. But I wanted to thank you, Heather, because it was a little more complicated in one sense that the Wampanoag language is protected. And we had to get a sign off that would say that we would never use it for any type of financial or anything, except for that, it was on that pole. So I just was going to thank Heather because she ran interference and got everything organized for us. And the public should go up there and take a look at it.
The Enterprise did a good story on it.
They did, yes.
Yes, it was a reasonable request, and the, it's a terrific site to visit.
Yeah.
Should treat yourself and go see the peace pole.
I would just say thank you, and it's a really special gesture and a great location for the community. So thank Rotary Club for taking it on.
Indeed.
Thinking about how much that site's come alive.
Yeah.
It's just remarkable. When you think back to when we were plotting to get the Pop Warner Field there.
Yeah.
And that seems like, you know.
Do you remember the fight to get that property?
Oh.
From Hewitt Packet?
And this old skate park, and I mean, you think, it's just, every time I drive through there, there's someone behind me blowing the horn because I'm driving slow.
And now we're going to have gorgeous bathrooms up there.
Right, right. The Skal and the BMX track and the Pop Warner Field, it's really become a center of activity. You take in the flea markets, and you start taking in the, you know, all the BMX. You know, it's broad-based community involvement. Terrific.
It's not an Xbox in sight.
Okay, thank you. I just have my, if you don't mind. Let us please continue to maintain those under attack in Eastern Europe, the conflict in the Middle East, and the overall threats to world peace in our thoughts and prayers. Prayers help. Yeah. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye. Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, our next meeting is Thursday, October 24th, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. here in Historic Town Hall. Good evening.